Red dots.
Thank you. We got, we got a memo on that one, on the red dots. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pinetop Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum. If everybody could take your seat and please make sure that you've got your cell phone silenced. I would ask that everybody stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Mayor.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet today in this council meeting. We're so grateful for this beautiful community in which we live here. We're grateful for the moisture Thou hast sent and pray that Thou would send more moisture to reinvigorate our forests and keep us safer. We're grateful for those who serve in the armed forces and protect the, all the privileges that we have as members of this great nation. And we ask Thee to bless them and their families. We're grateful for those who serve in our law enforcement, our firefighters and all of our first responders, and pray that Thou would watch over and protect them and their family members as well. We're grateful for this opportunity and as we look at important things for our community, pray that Thy Spirit might be here with us and ask these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item B on our agenda is Call to the Public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the town council may do so at this time. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person and she shall be addressed to the town council as a whole and not to any individual member. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council cannot discuss or act on items presented at this time. We've got several requests to speak. First, Jim Beck.
Thank you, Council.
Arizona is currently experiencing severe drought conditions. We've seen the Rodeo Chodescay Fire to our west destroy 462,600 acres and to our east, the Walla Fire devastated 538,000 acres. Thankfully, we are a small pocket of mostly forested land that was spared. Historically, wildfires of this magnitude come around every hundred years. According to the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management today, we could expect them every 10 years. Here in Arizona, government has put in place various levels of fire restrictions meant to minimize the spread of wildfires. Each level of restrictions allows or prohibits specific actions which may cause or prevent a fire from getting out of control. These fire restriction stages are safeguards intending to protect citizens and property. That is, until we read the fire restrictions link at www.311info.net/firerestrictions. Upon opening this link, to my dismay, it allows exemptions to the fire restrictions. Those exemptions are as follows. Quote, "Fire is used only for cooking of food or for providing warmth for human beings or for recreational purposes" are exempt. Yet, Fire Stage 1 and 2, those restrictions prohibit using a fire, campfire, stove fire, including charcoal fire. It sounds like the allowable exemptions canceled the fire restrictions. In my mind, this is a very serious mistake by, made by our state officials. Interestingly, the White Mountain Apache Tribe appears to show a higher level of safety for its citizens as the reservation remains in Stage 1 fire restrictions year-round with no exemptions listed as currently in Stage and is currently in Stage 2 fire restrictions. I would urge all concerned citizens to contact State Representative David Marshall at 602-926-3579 and Representative Walt Blackman, 602-926-3244, or call Navajo County Emergency Manager Katrina Jenkins at 928-524-4136 and request they eliminate all exemptions to the fire restrictions like the Apache Tribe has already done. Thank you.
Thank you. Susie Taylor?
I have a complaint to the Highway 260, which I know you've all driven, and the speeding is totally out of control. And I know you all know this. I'm sure you know it's 35 between mile marker 349 and 351. I know you've all gone 40 because I even do it. They're not going to give you a ticket. That's what we've heard. This has got to stop. 75 miles an hour is what they're doing on this highway. You know, we've had three accidents last week alone on this highway. If you want to increase your revenue, give out some tickets. Give some tickets out. There's nobody out there. Then you can hire more police officers to protect that highway. Something has got to be done. And I know you all know it because I know you travel that highway. You can't get into a business. You can't get out of a business. You don't want to get rear-ended because they're going too fast. That's all I've got to say. We have to do something with this highway. My business is there and it's hurting my business because nobody wants to turn in and get rear-ended because then they're going to lose their privilege of the car. You know that as well as I do. But obviously, nobody here wants to do anything because this has been going on for 15 years and it just gets worse and worse and worse. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment, Susie. Mike Moffenbier?
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, Vice Mayor, members of the council, neighbors and friends. My name is Mike Moffenbier. Most of you guys know me from either coffee with the council or my work on the chamber, but that's not why I'm here tonight. About four months ago, I had the chance to join the Rotary Club of the White Mountains. And on behalf of the Rotary, I'd like to extend our sincere gratitude to the town for inviting us to be part of this year's Easter egg hunt festivities. The day before Easter, our club members came together in full force to serve free hamburgers and hot dogs to nearly 800 attendees right here at Town Hall. It was a joyful, high-spirited event and we're proud to help make sure that all, that young Easter egg hunters and their families had a hot meal waiting after the fun. And we needed it that way. It was pretty cold out that day. Rotary International is an international service organization, but the heart of our mission lives right here in Pinetop. Our club is committed to showing up, serving, and supporting wherever we're needed. And events like this are a perfect reflection of that spirit. If you know a Rotary Club member, please take a moment to thank them for their service, for all that they do to enrich life here in our town. Their commitment and generosity often happen behind the scenes, but their impact is felt by many. Looking ahead, we're excited to share our next major initiative is the sponsorship of the Army National Guard Band with five scheduled free appearances over the Fourth of July holiday weekend. It's another opportunity for us to celebrate community, patriotism, and the power of music to bring us together. The schedule can be found on social media. This is an event that's also being done in collaboration with the chamber. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve. The Rotary Club is part to be a part of this community and we look forward to many more meaningful partnerships in the months and years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to all of Rotary for participating in a great event that we had last weekend, weekend before last, excuse me. Kenny Cale.
Mayor Irwin, Town Council, Town Staff, Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, my name's Kenny Cale. As you remember, I've approached the town council several times concerning the possible formation of a dog park. I would like the town to return to this issue with the same skills and approach towards collaboration which makes us stronger. I've informed you about neighboring towns and their parks, how they're missing out on the advertising to travelers, how we could be Arizona's first destination dog vacation area, how we could produce a better park geared towards increasing dog owner education, a town-centered piece to drive an increase in reliable tourism, incorporating the tracks network of trails, local businesses, and other innovative ideas, innovative ideas such as the communication of owners to dog through dog button training in the park, creating a scent trail loop, and a map giving owners a chance to train their dogs in identifying scents, wagon pulls for kids and their dogs, dog shows that exclude pure breeds, dog art within the park, information centers, opportunities to have a professional dog trainers to give tips such as how to approach a park if your dog's excited. These talks could create more clientele for trainers. We could create a better dog health through veterinarian talks and displays of dangerous foods for dogs, dog training runs that focus on agility obstacle training, dog diving training. There's a lot of different things that we can do that would be of interest and would make us stand out within the entire state. And people like their dogs and they like to treat their dogs to vacations, to treats, to, they treat them like their kids. It's something to think about, but it needs cooperation from the council, from the, from the town staff, and from public citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. That concludes the requests that I've got. So then we will go ahead and move on to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion to the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of town council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item and items removed are considered their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. We have quite a number of items on our consent agenda. Are there any questions from council members? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 is a reading of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside Proclamation of National Police Week, May 11th through the 17th, 2025. And I would like to welcome all of you with your families. It is so wonderful to see your families here as well. National Police Week, whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy and Congress signed a proclamation that designated May 15th as National Police Officer Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas our heroic police officers put their lives on the line every single day to protect their fellow citizens, maintain law and order, and safeguard the rights and freedoms of our community. And whereas it's important that all citizens recognize and understand the responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices that police officers bear each day, and to appreciate the sacrifices made by the loved ones who support them. And whereas members of this select group have shown courage, bravery, perseverance, and commitment to those they serve and defend while enduring long shifts in dangerous and unpredictable circumstances. And whereas we honor the officers who have given their lives in the line of duty as the ultimate sacrifice in service to Arizonans. And officers and their families have our deepest gratitude and respect, and remember their heroic devotion and mourn their loss. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, do hereby officially recognize the week of May 11th through the 17th, 2025 as National Police Week and respectfully ask all citizens to join in expressing their sincere thanks, gratitude, and appreciation to these men and women who are willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary to guard us and our loved ones and keep our community safe. In witness whereof, I have herein do set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, Arizona, done this first day of May 2025. In going on with this, item D2 is a presentation of the 2024 Police Department Awards. So I'm going to turn this over to Commander Wilkie and Chief Barnes and all the council. I would invite to come down in front of us here, stand on your assigned spot.
Can I actually switch you two to that end?
Sure.
So the Chiefs and Commander, Mayor, Vice Mayor. You can sit on the side of the flag.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We appreciate this time you've allowed us to come in and recognize the hard work and dedication of our police department employees for the year 2024. What we're going to do is we're going to call each nominee up. Commander Wilkie is going to read a short summary of why they were nominated for each one of these, and then I'll take one at the end. So we're going to go ahead and start off with, get this right here. This is for Officer Randy Keith. It's a speckle, Certificate of Special Recognition, Meritorious Achievement for your exemplary lifesaving efforts performed on an infant during a Sholo police call on September 9th, 2024.
So on September 9th, 2024, Officer Randy Keith was just leaving his residence in the morning, and he lives in the city of Sholo. But he was already in his uniform in his issued vehicle on his way to work when he overheard on the radio that Sholo was getting dispatched to an infant that wasn't breathing. Randy was aware enough and thoughtful enough that he knew he was close to this call, and he responded to the call. And the child was not breathing when he got on scene, and he immediately took, located the mother, took the infant, and started CPR. Since he was the first one there, he had to wait till emergency medical services got there and they took over. And sadly, the infant did pass away, but Officer Randy Keith is being commended for his actions and helping to save the life of that infant. The second awards are for Officer Levi Wickfirs and Officer Mike Abussejo. This is another meritorious achievement, Certificate of Special Achievement. On December 26th, in the early morning of 2024, Officer Levi Wickfirs and Officer Abussejo were working patrol and got dispatched to a call of a subject that possibly overdosed on opioids. Upon arrival, they were there again before medical services. They entered the residence. The subject was down on the floor. Officer Wickfirs immediately started to assess the patient and started CPR, realizing she wasn't breathing appropriately and needed help. Officer Abussejo was asked to go get his Narcan, which is a drug that reverses the effects of opioids. So together, they administered the Narcan and were able to basically reside, revive the patient when EMS arrived and they took over. Mike, you can make a U-turn and come back up here. Please. The next award is another Meritorious Achievement, Certificate of Special Achievement for Officer Mike Abussejo. For the entire year of 2024, Mike is being recognized as being a very proactive officer. For anyone in the town that does drive on the 260, probably seen Mike during the day pulling somebody over. If you happen to have a police radio, you hear him on the radio all the time calling out his traffic stops or responding to a call for service. So Mike's basic numbers are 837 traffic stops, 304 citations. He took 157 cases with 15 felony arrests. So a lot of that came off his proactivity. So Mike's being recognized for his exemplary service. The next award is another Meritorious Achievement, Certificate of Special Achievement for Animal Control Officer, Patrol Services Officer Chelsea Haas. She's now present tonight that I'm aware of. But her award is for her overall service for the year of 2024. Animal Control Officer and Patrol Services Officer doesn't really describe all her job responsibilities when it comes to her job description where it says, "Other duties as assigned." She took that to heart and does a little bit of everything. She's our, our Public Information Officer. She does our social media. She's a vehicle collision investigator, a phlebotomist, and many more things that I'm sure I'm forgetting. In 2024, she did complete a course through the Northwestern University Center for Public Safety as a crash investigator too, which is a pretty technical course. And she's the type that, she has applied that several times since she's gotten that certification. So she's been a huge asset to the department with everything that she does. The next award is a Police Public Safety Achievement Award. And actually, the next five awards are all based around the same event, which was a pretty big event for us in 2024. It was actually in the county. Two deputies were responding to a residence where there was a disturbance. And as soon as the deputies pulled up to the residence, they're, one of the vehicles was actually shot, and they were both basically shot at from the subject inside the residence. Our department was called to assist and it ended up being a barricaded subject inside the building by himself, but he had plenty of weapons with him and he was using them to wreak havoc on the neighborhood. So we'll get the first people up here. Sergeant Garvin, Officer Ghana, and Officer Johnson. They're each receiving a Police Public Safety Achievement Award. They were on duty at the time and they were some of the first officers on scene. They were assigned, initially assigned to perimeter duty, basically to contain the subject and make sure that other people in the area were safe. So they were deployed around the residence while the subject was still shooting outside of his residence at the, at our officers. Sergeant Garvin actually called me. It was the middle of the night, and as she was talking to me, I could hear the gunshots in the background. So it was a very serious situation which this small narrative doesn't begin to cover. But they're all being commended for their actions and putting their life in jeopardy to protect citizens and keep the suspect contained to the residence.
Chief, can I have?
Before you guys go, don't go yet. I just need a chief thing. Scoot over a little bit and look to the side. All right, one, two, three.
The next recipient is Sergeant Justin McNeil. Again, it's for the same incident. Sergeant McNeil is receiving the Police Medal of Valor. Sergeant McNeil was one of the first, one of the first supervisors on scene, and he's also part of the White Mountain Special Response Team. So as a Special Response Team, Team Leader, he took control of the situation immediately and started making a plan to address the subject inside the residence and, and the threat. So Sergeant McNeil took command of the scene, deployed the other officers that we just talked about, trying to protect the scene and protect the citizens and keep the subject contained. At one point, he and some other subjects approached the residence closer, closer to try to figure out exactly what was going on and what they needed to do. At that time, the subject was still firing weapons. As part of the Special Response Team, they had the armored vehicle show up and Sergeant McNeil and his counterparts developed a plan and I think they had about five, four or five people in the vehicle. And they were going to drive up to the residence, do callouts, and talk to the subject and either try to get them to surrender or get them to come out of the house. As they were approaching the house, the subject shot the vehicle with the high-powered rifle. It hit the passenger windshield. Luckily, that's highly bulletproof and protected all the occupants. They did eventually end the threat and control the scene. It turned out to be an officer-involved shooting where an officer shot the subject. But, so Sergeant McNeil's job wasn't done at that point. He had to flip to a different role and do the investigation for the whole officer-involved shooting that had taken place. So that's what he's being commended for. So that's what he's being commended for. The next recipient is Officer Levi Wickfirs. This is the same incident. Officer Wickfirs is also a member of the Special Response Team. And at the time, the armored vehicle arrived on scene, he was assigned what we call the turret position. So there's a turret on top of the armored vehicle that an officer basically stands out of with the upper part of his body and is able to address threats or anything that's around the vehicle. So again, Officer Wickfirs was in the vehicle at the time they were approaching the residence and the high-powered rifle hit the front windshield. Officer Wickfirs had limited protection from armored plates and stuff that are up around the turret, but he maintained focus on the residence, was able to see the subject, see that he still had the weapon and was still engaging with officers outside the residence. So Officer Wickfirs engaged the subject and ended the threat. And just for the record, the subject was not killed, but he probably will spend a long time in jail. Okay, so now we're getting into our People of the Year. We have four different awards for that. The first, first person to be recognized is Priscilla De La Garza for Civilian of Priscilla is our Executive Secretary that works very closely with the Chief and I. She started in 2023 and was immediately thrown into the fire as far as her responsibilities. It was hard for the Chief and I to even describe what her job was because people have taken care of us and been in that position that they do such a good job, we don't even realize everything that they do. But Priscilla jumped in and started learning things and was very effective from day one. One of the big things she took over was an event we call Sirens and Sleigh Bells, which a lot of people may know as Shop With A Cop. It's a Walmart event where children are allowed to come to Walmart and officers are present and go shopping with the monies that are donated by various people. This year, I think there was over 150 children and their families that were there. There were 60-plus volunteers and it was just a crazy event that Priscilla spearheaded and worked with others to make it happen. So that's just one of the many things that she does that she's been recognized as the Employee of the Year 2024. So we have people that work for us that are volunteers. We call them Volunteers in Policing or VIPs. And the 2024 Volunteer of the Year is Larry Agen. He's not present tonight, but should be noted, he was also the, one of the Volunteers of the Year last year. Larry's just one of those guys that really enjoys what he's doing and it shows in everything he does. He's an informal leader for the group and keeps everybody motivated and keeps that program going. So everything he did throughout the years, why he's being recognized as the Volunteer of the Year 2024. Our Officer of the Year 2024 is Officer Levi Wickfirs. As we already mentioned, Officer Wickfirs wears many hats at the department, like so many other people, is part of the Special Response Team. He was involved in some incidents. He's already been up here a few times. So that's just some of the reasons he's getting, I'm sorry, Police Officer of the Year 2024. In 2024, Officer Wickfirs really took it upon himself to get a lot of education, go to a lot of different schools. He's a general instructor, a firearms instructor. Like we said, he's part of the Special Response Team where he is a sniper. He went through sniper school this year. He does gas deployment and building clearing. One of the specialties he also looked at is active shooters. He's been teaching out at our local police academy, teaching that class. But he spent a lot of time this year doing a lot of things, so we appreciate that. He's our Officer of the Year. Right, the next award is for Supervisor of the Year 2024, which is Sergeant Tom Aducci. I don't believe Tom's here tonight. Tom has spent a long time in law enforcement. He's got 37 years in law enforcement. He spent 20 years with the Pima County Sheriff's Department and he's spent the last 17 years with us. So he's definitely dedicated to his job and enjoys what he's doing. He's one of those type of people that commands respects. He doesn't need to demand respect. His work ethics and just the way he handles himself is somebody that a lot of officers look up to and we appreciate that. He does his fair share of patrol work, consisting of enforcement, call response, case investigation, and scene supervision. I can always count on Tom to do the right thing on scenes. He's one of those that can work with little to no supervision and always keeps me in the loop. Okay, for the Chief of Police Commendation for 2024, it's Detective Ricky Bunch. Detective Ricky Bunch is a highly motivated detective with incredible work ethic. As the only detective with the agency, he handles a large number of, I'm sorry, he handles a larger than normal caseload. He handles all the follow-up on serious cases involving person crimes and property crimes. Some of the highlights are in an indictment on a 1988 cold, cold rape case, numerous arrests on an Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force operation, conviction on a child sexual assault involving several children, ongoing work with the pawn shop homicide, a plea deal on a 1996 cold case homicide, collision reconstruction assistance on a vehicle versus pedestrian fatality, numerous assists for out-of-state agencies for homicide and sexual assault cases, numerous drug cases, assisting patrol, and numerous callouts for assistance on the major crimes Task Force with the Navajo County Task Force. In 2024, Detective Bunch was nominated by the Navajo County Sheriff's Office as a, or as the 2024 Arizona Homicide Investigators Association for his work on the 1996 cold case homicide. Detective Bunch serves on the Navajo County Homicide Task Force, the Navajo County Multidisciplinary Team. That team reviews cases of abuse and neglect, the Navajo County Sexual Assault Response Team, Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, and the Navajo County Fatality Review Team. He also has a great working relationship with all the agencies and support agencies he interacts with. Detective Bunch is well-respected by his peers and supervisors and he helps in many other ways around the department. He assists the department with callouts, events, education, helping to cover patrol shifts when needed, truancy investigations at the school, most of the grand jury testimony at the Navajo County Sheriff's Office in Holbrook, and he is a system administrator for several department systems. He attends a wide variety of training that keeps him proficient in a wide variety of skill sets and he keeps up to date with case law and trends that help him with his investigations. He attained his Bachelor's of Science degree in criminal justice this year and will be pursuing a Master's degree in forensic science right after that. Detective Bunch is also part of numerous associations that train on and assist with numerous types of investigations. Detective Bunch has assisted the department with writing several grants for equipment this year that support criminal investigations, a grant that supports specialized DNA processing on cold cases, a grant through the Investigators Guild to provide staff support on cold cases, and a grant through the Arizona State Parks for a UTV and overtime cost to perform Forest Service patrols in our area. Congratulations, Detective Bunch.
Each and every one of you is important to us and we so, we are so fortunate to have the, the police force that we've got. So thank you all and we look forward to continuation of great things. So thank you. Anything else you wanted to add, Chief?
No, just appreciate everybody's hard work this past year and, and for the upcoming year and we appreciate you again allowing us the time to recognize everybody.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, you are. D3, Discussion and Consideration of Resolution Number 25-1773, Approving the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact Agreement between the Town of Pinetop Lakeside and the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. Chief, go right ahead.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. The Arizona Mutual Aid Compact enables participants, participating political subdivisions and tribal nations to share resources, personnel, et cetera, during emergencies and then be reimbursed for the resources that were provided. The benefit of this is mutual aid agreements provide a mechanism to participating parties to quickly obtain emergency assistance in the form of personnel, equipment, materials, and other related services. The primary objective is to facilitate rapid, short-term deployment of emergency support prior to, during, and after an incident. A signed agreement does not obligate the provisions or receipt of aid. The compact provides a tool for use should an incident dictate the need. The financial cost for this would be upfront costs that the town incurred for, for an event that could be reimbursed later on. This was brought to our attention by Emergency Manager Katrina Jenkins that we had a 2022 agreement in place, but they updated it in 2024. So at this point, we're just renewing for the 2024 update that they had. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief?
I have just one thing on this, but I thought, I thought I understood when it started and when it stopped until I read the paragraph on term. And it says that the compact shall cease to be effective, the 2014 compact, will cease to be effective as of midnight December 31st of 2023. Okay? And then it says, and this compact shall go into effect immediately thereafter. Okay? Or for all parties that have signed this compact before that date. It got really confusing about when you had to sign this and when it would be in effect because you can't sign it before the date of December 31st, 2023, it didn't seem to me.
I'm not sure on that.
Well, anyway, you might have the legal bigos. Take a look at that, that paragraph and make sure it's right.
I'll do.
Thanks for catching that. Any other questions or comments? Motion? By Speaker.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 25-1773, approving the 2024 Arizona Mutual Aid Compact Agreement between the Town of Pinetop Lakeside and the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs and authorize the mayor to execute the compact.
Second, the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, as a further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries the motion. Thank you for bringing this to us. Item D4 is Town Council Committee Liaison and Town Manager Monthly Reports. I think we can go through these relatively quickly. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the liaison with the community center and with the federal political actions. There's a lot of concern with the Board of Directors over there about future funding, grant, that sort of thing. So I just want to say there's some uneasiness, but there's been nothing that currently has affected them. They've been getting their grants, been getting the money. Their grants have been approved. NACOC, Pima Bank, Sparklight, Daily Web, and a few other minor ones. Honda donated $1,000 worth of meat, which is always greatly appreciated. So I just want to say there's an uneasiness, but we will, we will get through it. Since last month, the council served lunch on April 24th. I was a bit under the weather, but my colleagues persevered. The next lunch service will be May 22nd. Moving to the Nature Center. There's a lot of conversation earlier, a lot of mention of Norris Dodd, who passed away recently. He was an outstanding member of the Nature Center. He was part of Save the Park and he was on the Pinetop Lakeside Town Council for quite a few years. He was a leader in the creation of the Nature Center and the first and the only executive director of the Nature Center. He was involved in a lot of activities with the kids in summer camps and his involvement with the Nature Center. Well, last Saturday, a group of Norris's friends and neighbors gathered at the Nature Center to share their memories and experiences and then planted a tree behind the Nature Center in his name. I think there were like 16 folks, 16 citizens that have been recognized in such a manner. The last thing I have from the Nature Center. This coming Saturday, May 3rd, kicking off their Saturday Guided Hikes. And former, former Councilwoman Lynn Craigbaum is going to lead that and kick off the season there. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Phillips?
I got nothing to report.
Counselor Heisler?
I have nothing to report.
Vice Mayor?
Just one thing. Blue Ridge was scheduled to have graduation on May 17th, high school graduation. That was changed to May 16th. That was something that was put in place over a year ago when they selected that date. The state track meet is on the 17th, so they did not want to force students to choose between graduation and the track meet. That's why it was changed to the day before. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
Just one quick thing on the Arizona Alpine Trail. I'd like to, to thank Tony Albaferro is putting us in contact with the Arizona Office of Tourism. We have some exciting things coming up and I'll report on that next time.
Thank you. Counselor Frenow?
Just a quick report on tracks and the Chipmunk Connector Trail and an obstacle on the Los Burrows Trail called the Collarbone Section. Those are both reroutes or realignments that are being tabled or, or paused right now and, and just because of the lack of Forest Service staffing. But they're very important to Pinetop Lakeside because those particular sections are really what drives are really what drive a lot of cyclists to our zip code and area, and they'll ride that trail frequently. And so it's just something that they tracks actually mentioned and kind of in passing maybe asked for some help with that.
Thank you.
Could I add one thing to your report?
Go ahead.
Tracks has been in contact with me as my affiliation with White Mountain Open Trails Association. We're running out of maps for the and it's a cooperative motorized, non-motorized effort to produce a map that shows the motorized trails and the non-motorized trails, hiking trails. And we we in 2016 bought, I don't know how many thousand, probably close to 100,000 of these maps. And there are out of them now. We can't find any more. So they are looking for maps or might redo their map, is what I'm saying. So good effort on their part.
Okay, thank you. Keith and Rob and I attended a local leaders dinner last week at Snowflake and had a really informative presentation from the folks that are going to repurpose the old Abitibi Sawmill into ZENNI Homes. If anybody wants to look them up, I think it's a pretty exciting thing for our region. Ultimately, they're hoping to produce maybe 1,200 jobs. And these are not menial jobs. They're really high-paying jobs. So it's very exciting for the whole region. We also heard from all the other leaders in our county on things that they've got going in their areas. So I think the future is really bright for Navajo County and Apache County as well, eastern Arizona. So that was a great thing that we were able to do. So Z E N N I Homes, if anybody wants to look them up online. And then I just want to remind everybody that Blue Ridge Scholarship Fund is having Taste of the Mountain on May 17th at Camp Grace. It's your opportunity to sample a little from the menu of about 17 different restaurants. Tickets are available online. And I also want to thank Annie and Tony and Rob for the Easter celebration. That was a great event, so much uncertainty, and it turned out really well. Counselor Smith, I understand you were there all day long. We appreciate that.
Yep.
I know you.
It was fun.
I think you enjoyed it. It was fun to see you there. Counselor Turner, I know you were out there serving serving lunch, so we do appreciate that as well.
That's why I don't have a voice now.
Okay, it'll come back. It'll come back. Anyway, Keith, I'll turn it over to you for any additional things.
Yes, thank you. Just a few things that are coming up. The Public Works Department is holding a community tree planting at Woodland Lake Park on May 17th from 8:00 to 11:00. That'll be along the South Walking Path. If you are able to come out and help, contact Madison at Public Works to sign up. Coffee with Council will be held on May 13th at 11:00 at the Pinetop Coffee House. Conversations with Council will be held on May 20th at 5:30 at the Lakeside Fire Station. The topic will be annexation. The White Mountain Nature Center is sponsoring a home ignition zone class. A lot of talk going on about preparing your homes for wildfire, as we did tonight. So there's this class, there's 40 seats available. I believe it's a $10 fee. It's an all-day class on May 16th. Contact the Nature Center to sign up. The VFW Post 2364 will hold a flag ceremony on Armed Forces Day on May 17th at 11:00 here at the VFW Memorial Park here at Town Hall. There is certainly a lot going on on May 17th. And then again, on May 17th, an evening of Apache culture will be held at MMRC from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock. So let's walk out.
All right. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.